I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first agenda item, approval of February 19th, 2025, forward agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion. I second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. All right, decision on the matter discussed in executive session. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that no further action is warranted on the matter addressed in executive session under ORS 192 dot 660 subsection two, subsection B, and ORS 192 dot 660 subsection two, subsection F.
I second that motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, 5-0. Say something positive. I'll start. We had an awesome student panel and just really want to thank the school for hosting us. It was great. We had probably, we had a smaller group, but a powerful group who provided some really, really cool insights. And so that was, that was just awesome. So that's my shout out to Sosa and I appreciate, I appreciate the hospitality today.
And I, as my say something, kind of like to second that and say this school culture, the students that were there today were part of the student council for the school. Those are relatively small school. I think there is a lot of engagement and they speak very highly of their experience here and it was great, great to hear from those students.
I would like to, I guess Casey Alderson might be making an announcement. It's a little premature, but I think at least we're getting forward motion on the student exchange concept. It's all pieces aren't there and he's going to give us that update on that, but it's a, it's a positive thing, you know? Maybe students can go see what it's like in Detroit, students in Detroit come see what it's like in Maryland. So that's good, maybe.
Mr. Alderson.
I will pick up right where you left off on camp things. Yeah, so met with Lois McMillan from the American Exchange Program. Have a meeting set up also with Jessica Golden about getting our schools involved starting next year. And really excited about it. Had a meeting scheduled with her that was actually canceled because of snow. But we are moving forward and really excited about the opportunity that it would give our kids to, be able to get outside of our bubble in Southern Oregon or Oregon. And really excited about moving forward with that.
In the last four or five weeks, a team of district office staff and some of our teachers have gone to three schools, three elementary schools and sat, pulled up a chair alongside our teachers and listened to their conversation about student data and student performance. And so we've been to Madrona with Principal Kelly Lebel and Fort Venoy with Principal Jessica Falconhagen and Friddale with Principal Heather Yant. And it is nothing short of fantastic what those three leaders have done with their buildings to lead a culture of teachers looking at data, talking about standards, improving their practice, and then moving forward day after day after day. So my shout out is to those three that we've been to visit. We have four left to go and we're going to do the middle school this Friday, some of our groups as well. Just a huge shout out to not only the admin, but also their teachers and the classified support staff that help make it all run as well. So huge shout out. And thank you to our district team that's traveling to all these schools, looking for all the good work that's happening.
So I'll follow up with Rich and Jen's, say something positive about today's Sosa panel with students. Just really appreciate the student voice, the diversity across our district and actually hearing from our students. We go to all of our high schools every year and have been for a number of years now. It's fantastic. And I just appreciate the board listening to and hearing from our students with all the fantastic things that are going on and also probing for where their concerns are, where their needs are not being met on a specific thing. And today was perfect and fantastic. So thank you Sosa team for putting that on and to the students as well.
Well, one of the things that we emphasize, Dave has for sure, if you think of the graphic that we reflect on, has safety as kind of that umbrella, right? And so safety being very important to us as we move forward. I'm really excited about the opportunity through a grant that Jessica Durant actually did a lot of work on to improve safety in our, in our school district. And that is centered around what is called access control. And getting the right people at the right time access to the building and being able to just improve security. It's not going to get us in a complete package of an access control system, but it's going to get us started. And we've been working with a consultant that has partnered with some of our neighboring districts, Ashland in particular. And we're putting together a project right now, starting to map some things out. And just really excited about the opportunity for our district in improving safety.
What are those, how long do those typically, I know that's a cycle, right? Is that days, months, years? How long does it typically take to put something in play?
Oh, like this particular project?
Yeah.
We'll have it, we'll end during summer. It'll get done in, well, it'll get started, I'd say in the next couple of months. And we'll have it done by the start of this year. That's the plan.
Mr. Valenswell.
All right. I'd just like to recognize, we have a report that's coming up here soon and it's by a company and a person, the CEO and founder of the company Plan LED. They're going to be discussing some of the safety measures that we put in place into our schools to keep our kids safe from infectious viruses and diseases and things like that. It's fascinating. But I wanted to call out the idea that we have this company here, but we, they have, they've supported Three Rivers School District since we reopened our schools back in 2020. But the CEO and founder is here today measuring things and doing tests and making sure that the things that we've implemented are effective and have an impact and just supporting us. So I want to thank John Wong of Plan LED. You'll get from him and still some SafeTraces soon. And I'm excited to hear what they have to say and share with you tonight. But I just want to thank them for being here and to keep our kids safe. And superintendent report, so one of the things that I've had a lot of questions from the board about is legislative updates, where are we at with the legislative process that's currently underway up in Salem? And could we right now, as well January 21st session did begin and now coming up on February 21st, legislative council drafts have to be returned for a February 25th measure deadline. So what that means is new laws and bills have to be turned in by February 25th in order to be considered and heard. So right now they're kind of milling through all those things up at the Capitol. That's an important date for us because then we'll understand and I'll talk about some of the key bills that we're looking at in just a second. Another key date for us as we start to consider that the budget committee will convene soon is the February 26th revenue forecast. So that's the first real revenue forecast that we'll receive as a school board to start to then anticipate what our budget will be built upon. The other key date is May 14th. That's largely considered the most, are the final revenue forecasts that we'll receive. And oftentimes there's quite a bit of change between February and May's revenue forecast, but we'll, we'll see what happens there. But that's kind of where we're at time wise. And some of the key bills that advocacy work has been happening from Southern Oregon superintendents, some of the state school fund and student success act, so making sure that those things stay intact. Special education funding has been a hot topic and that's what I was on Zoom call with our local legislators this morning. And there is, and it's a complicated funding mechanism, but essentially we are funded at an elevated rate for 11% of our, up to 11% of our student population for special education. And we have a higher population than that. And so the state's initiative is to raise that percentage rate up to maybe 15 or 16%. However, the conundrum is that there is no money to do that. It costs around $400 million annually for the state of Oregon to do that. So while there's a strong desire from lawmakers to do that, they are resolute in not passing a bill that is unfunded. And so that's kind of the sticking point for them right now. And the second agenda item for them is unfunded mandates across the board. So they have a long history in Salem of passing bills and laws that are unfunded. And it calls on, you know, people that are impacted by those laws and bills to fund those things. And it has created long-term effects. So they're trying to get away from some of that stuff. Let's see, other bills that are looking, that we are looking at, so after the 25th, we'll know if these are in. Class size as a mandatory subject for BARD would be a really big impact on us. Cell phone bill is still looking, is being looked at quite a bit. Start times for high schools is actually being considered as a bill to be considered for law. And mandating electric school buses by a certain time of year is also up on the, on the docket up there. So we're keeping a close eye on what's going on in Salem and I'll be reporting as I discover any more things.
If they mandate something that's unfunded, what does the district have to do if anything? I mean, I want a rocket ship too, but.
Well, we have to, we have to fund it. We have to, we have to take money from every other classroom and class initiative and things like that. And we have to make those things happen. And so that's been a big push for Sosa, the administrative group here in Oregon to say, look, well, it may be a good idea. We can't execute these things without the funding to do it. And so unfunded mandates is a strong topic of conversation at the legislative level for I'd say the last two bienniums, but now starting to be heard. I think not, not just a buzzword, it's actually being digested by lawmakers. But that's good.
Any other questions for Dave on the superintendent?
A little bit more.
Oh, hang on, hang on, let me, let me.
People were sad when they thought it was over.
I saw the pause there and so.
There is a resolution to acknowledge Classified Appreciation Week and Rich will be taking care of that for us. But I wanted to talk about what that means. So I talked about classified employees, licensed employees. What does that all mean? So I want to talk about classified employees for just a second. So when we pass this resolution, people in the audience understand what it actually means. As professionals and educators, classified employees perform many of the vital duties that keep Oregon Public Schools safe and functional for students, administrators, and teachers. They support us in the work we do. They're critical frontline workers and they're the most diverse component of our professional education workforce and are the most reflective of the communities that they serve. So that's really important. Our classified staff are often folks from that community. Where, you know, we may have licensed staff that travel from Medford to Cape Junction or whatever. Classified people are from their community and they work in their community schools most of the time. Let's see, the term classified employees refers to nearly all education professionals who are not four-year licensed teachers or administrators. Here's a list of, hopefully complete, I went through and made sure I tried to get everybody. But in our district, we have food service, campus monitors, family advocate, educational assistance in ERC, life skills, ELL, and school-wide educational assistance. We have student retention assistance. We have college and career advocates, speech, language, and pathology assistants, licensed practical nurse, library managers, support services coordinators, print services, delivery clerk, courier, special program staff, office managers, receptionists, office clerks, youth transition program specialists, accounting clerks and bookkeepers, custodial staff, maintenance and operations staff, and our technology department personnel. I probably missed one qualification. I apologize. I went through this a couple of times. But those are the folks that keep the wheels turning. And when Rich reads that proclamation to declare Classified Appreciation Week, it really does mean something. And so that is what, that's the end of my report, Rich.
All right. Any, any questions for Mr. Valenswell? All right, I'm going to add to it. You should have got an email on Senate Bill 667, I think is what it is, that's out there. You might want to read that and, and send back your opinion on that. Essentially, essentially what, what happens is so if, if say, union strikes, they are automatically eligible for unemployment. So they will get unemployment and then they will get their back pay. And you can see how this can be kind of, it's just a bunch of, another bill that can be budget crippling that's out there. This doesn't just pertain to like a teachers' union or a classified union. This also applies to other state resources. So this is, it, it's not a good deal in my opinion, but read it on your own and make your own, own decision and support it or, or not. But it's, it's one thing that, it just doesn't, it just doesn't sound right. All right, community partner of the month, Mr. Dave Valenswell.
All right, I'm super excited to bring Mike Herschel and team up to the podium to introduce our community partner of the month.
Hi. Thank you today for coming to meet with the students. And what's even better is that one of the students mentioned VOTEC. It just so happens that we are honoring the U715 group that actually sets us up. And in particular, Aaron Valsker. So what, I wrote it down to do so many things. Every semester, we send students to a VOTEC class. And it's at their campus, at 15. And they teach them hands-on technical activities. This semester, apparently it's woodworking, but they've done all kinds of stuff previously. They also have an opportunity, this is a similar opportunity, for our students who might be struggling. They can be, go to a class there and be eligible to get an apprenticeship with a local business. This opportunity, like I said, is to all our youth, our kids that get GEDs, our kids that are struggling that might not graduate, and our graduates, okay? In these programs, what I see our students learn is number one, employability skills, which is huge. Work ethic and responsibility, safety awareness, and are surrounded by people who care about them and invest in their future. They have the same, trust to hope. I understand this and I see this as they're giving trust to their students in the hope that they will use what they've learned to better our communities and be beneficial members of our communities. They do an excellent job with our kids and I'm proud to have them as part of our team. So thank you again, Aaron and U715. Good thing. And the presenter I also have, Ms. Bailey Reed, and she's from Sosa's board. Thank you very much. She earned that. I appreciate everything you do for our kids.
Awesome.
And he has to run because he has a class at four o'clock.
Hang on, you got a question, right? So you comment.
Comment. We actually hired somebody straight out of 715 and they did great. So in terms of employability, I think this individual is having, you know, ups and downs, but he was a great employee.
That's awesome to hear. Thank you very much and thanks for what you do for the community. All right, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Reports. North Valley High School Student Spotlight.
Hi, I'm Lyndon Manning, the principal at North Valley High School. And I am super pleased to highlight some stellar students to you all today. It is our leadership group. So if you're in leadership at North Valley, can you stand up? And if you teach leadership at North Valley, please stand up. You can have to say say it as much as you want, but these students and their classmates who couldn't attend tonight are incredible. As we know, leadership has a huge impact on the climate and the culture inside of a building. And they perfectly embody our core values of respect, responsibility, and resilience to a T. They're great examples for their peers. They care about the activities they put on at the school level. And even furthermore, they care about their community. They have done multiple blood drives. They have helped facilitate and write letters on Valentine's Day to people in our old folks homes. They have also helped go to Hearts With a Mission. They are truly service oriented and we are so proud to have them at North Valley. So I just want to congratulate all of you and your peers. And you're doing an amazing job. Can't wait to see how our spirit competition shakes out due to all of your hard work. And we have about a minute-long video that we'd like to share with you, just highlighting their perspective on what makes a good leader.
What do you think leaders have to be helpful, caring, kind, compassionate to?
Being a leader, being intelligent, being able to make smart decisions and being able to engage people.
They can overcome so many challenges. They are so responsible and respect others.
I really appreciate service leadership and working for their.
Both influence over others, but also like influencing yourself to do the best and holding accountability for everybody, including yourself and encouraging you to do the best for me. Being leaders, ones who are selfless.
It's not thinking you on yourself. It's about what's underneath for other people.
A leader has to be able to put themselves in other people's shoes and be able to help support people knowing what they're going through.
That will be for another time.
It's so great that you guys could come out and, and show that video. I think, you know, it always makes, it always makes the board members, I know for a fact, and everybody else really happy when we get to see the students actually come present and things like that. And I want to thank North Valley for, for doing that. Any other comments? All right, thank you very much. All right, UV CUE deployment and localized validation of air quality. Thanks, thanks guys.
Thank you.
My name is John Ma. I'm CEO of Plan LED and Phil Iroh, VP of Manufacturing at SafeTraces. And it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you. I just want to briefly mention that my relationship with Three Rivers School District has been a special one. And we worked with a lot of sports teams, a lot of schools in the past. But we find that, you know, when we began to work with Dave and the leadership in here, there's something special about this group because we were able to really participate in working with the kids and really bring both the technology and education to the community. And we saw the difference. And it was really exciting for me there. So we see a leadership that approached the holistic, educational, and also the technological integration to bring the best education environment to the students. So that's been a special part of my experience here. So I just wanted to thank you. And just want to briefly mention that there's been a study during COVID that the Boston Children's Hospital, you know, that showed that 70% of COVID transmission came from children when the school was in session. And so it was, it was a very important study for us to understand because if we want to protect our city, whether it's for our hospitals or workplaces or any part of our communities, if the 70% of transmission comes from the children, especially when the school was in session, that means if we don't protect our schools, then we cannot protect our communities. In 2023, if we move to the next slide. In 2023, the White House commissioned ASR, which is a standard organization that sets an indoor air quality standard for our buildings, that we need a new standard that addresses air safety. Because we have not had an air quality standard for 100 years that addresses, you know, controlling the airborne infection. So since 1922, this was the first time they came up with a new standard. And then the new standard asked for multiplication, many times more airflow in a building. And for schools, you know, the United Average, you know, the average, average schools have about two cool energy changes per hour in a classroom setting. And the new code asks for about four times or five times more of the airflow in classroom setting to protect the children and our teachers. And so doing that mechanically is almost impossible. You know, the raising that money, the time it takes to expand into the construction was not possible. Department of Energy was recommending, let's look at ways we can make the classrooms safer without having to increase our mechanical ventilation process. So upwardly JAMA-1 WU was one of the only solutions that was tested and proven effective over about eight years period of time. And during COVID, you know, the Neo-Genki's, which is one of our clients, reached out to us asking if we can help protect the players and the, you know, team operation. And from our research, we came to the conclusion that this might be the best way and only way to protect people when you're sharing the same airspace is solid as impacted. You know, so that was the solution that we brought to Three Rivers during COVID. And the, the leadership here welcomed that science-based approach where we can not only do something that is based on a proven concept, but that actually has a proven track history of reducing the transmission by about 80 to 90%. And this was used to protect doctors and nurses during TV outbreaks and MIBO outbreaks and Asian influenza outbreaks. So our excitement was if there's a way we can measure how much protection we're bringing to the space and we're able to do it on-site, we thought that the true benefit of this protection can be not only for, for field our clients, but it's something that can be the best way to go, you know, permanent way to protect our educational buildings in the future. So Department of SafeTraces makes that possible. And today we just performed the first in-class testing of UV, UV air protection with tracer technology, first time I think ever in our district, right?
Yeah, for schools, this is the first time.
Yes, this was a very special day today. This is the exact day today because not only it will be great for Three Rivers School District, but this is something that Department of Energy is watching. Because they know that we can do this very energy efficiently and we can add a real level of protection. So could you tell us a little bit about the protection?
Yeah, I think the slide just shows. The next one? There you go. So the device is, it's simple in concept. We created a little sprayer, which you see on right there. And we use a, what we call a saliva surrogate for the assault solution. They would tag with it where it says short sequence DNA. And we detect either where it went or how quickly it went out of the room. But the, when we talked to the industry and leaders like John here, they, they all said, well, can you tell us how much it inactivates pathogens under UV light conditions? And our senior R and D director, he invented one where we have a spray that is actually sensitive and can degrade in a similar fashion to pathogens. And you can map the, kind of scale the factor of its degradation to a pathogen's degradation. And so we invented this and this is what we did this morning in two of your classrooms. So the thing on the left is air sample. And there's just some little air filters and it's maybe a little bit more powerful than a fish tank pump that sucks air into it. And you see what's the, there's four of those. The first one is clearly in the timekeeping period. And then the other three come out in the last part of an hour. And we can tell from the measurements how much the air has been, how much of the aerosol has been removed by the HBAC system. Well, it's now. Well, as now, a very.
The new innovation is we can also address the inactivation by the upper room UV GI systems that Plan LED has installed there. So this is really exciting for all of us. It's, it's simple in concept, it's a little harder to, there's a lot of math in there somewhere.
Yeah, so we just wanted to say that we really appreciate this relationship, this partnership that we have. And there is a lot of eyes watching what we do here. And I think it can potentially create an affordable and safe path so that there can be a safety, equity and safety among school districts. So that's our mission and thank you again for the opportunity to share.
All right, thank you. Is there, is there any questions?
Yes, so statistics are funny things. I mean, you can measure.
Per million and all that stuff. Do you have any, do you have any thing that talks about the effectiveness, overall effectiveness? And I mean, it's really hard to correlate that. But to say that, you know, we estimate that the effectiveness is that we have twenty percent reduction or something like that.
You know, you can also add to that, I mean, let me just, just our perspective on that. When we were asked if we could bring a technology that can protect people when you're sharing the airspace with the infected person, we went to try to understand, you know, if the study has been done in the same context where people are consistently, you know, exposed to people that are infected, continually exhaling infectious aerosols into the space. And if there are studies done, not, not by the private companies, studies done by academic institutions like Harvard Medical School, Johns Hopkins in Oxford. And the school that actually studied this over the last eight years period of time, the fight is like TV. And so the, when we talk about, you know, the, there are references to see the transmission reduction, we're talking about a lot of peer reviewed research documentation. And there's, there's a whole library of them. And so the, when we identified that strategy, that was the first thing that we wanted to check. And what we're doing now with companies like Safe Traces is that take what we found in the research and we could model it with our product so we can have a proposal that is an estimated level of disinfection that we're bringing to the space. Now, now with the tracer technology that they bring, they can actually validate that. And with, with actual aerosol, you know, the counts that they're, they're measuring damage by the UV output from the unit. So, so what, what they actually measure and what we reference from the research are the same. That's where there's a power of bringing something that we can actually measure and verify inside.
Well, another question is, is we're working hard to plug holes in the roof. It sounds expensive. Can we afford it?
I can help with that, John. So we have been able to deploy UVQ solution in our special education settings, our life skill settings, in our kindergarten, first and second grade classrooms, and then anywhere else like cafeterias where students would gather and eat and, and, you know, share space and things like that. Now, it is scalable and if we're trying to achieve the same level of protection by, you know, upgrading our HVAC, we're talking about multimillion dollar solution versus several thousand dollar solutions. And so we're able to make steps towards complete coverage with UVQ where we would not be able to do, you know, I mean, you can't do almost anything around HVAC system unless it's a complete overhaul of an HVAC system to get it to that standard. So like anything else, it's, it's much more affordable to create a safer environment for students than, you know, a traditional HVAC upgrade.
Anything comments? ASR two forty-one, which is, was mentioned, it's the new standard that's out for managing infection, infectious aerosol. I'm a member of that community and I've contributed to creating that standard. That is winding its way through the process of becoming a national standard that's recognized by the pro enforcing bodies around the nation where they will say the building codes are such that you'll have to build a building in accordance with the ASR two forty-one standard requirements. Now, those requirements require an infection risk management mode to be allowed, to be possible where if you have a pandemic or you have a flu season that's extra strong, a government official say, look, we're in a situation where you need to implement infection risk management mode, then you'll have to provide either additional airflow or disinfecting air cleaners such as John's, or you'll have to reduce the occupancy in your spaces. Because it's all measuring the amount of CFN per occupant as opposed to air changes in a room. Because you could have the same classroom with fifteen kids or thirty kids and the one with thirty kids is going to need more air. So that's, it's very well thought out in that respect. And it's modeled with advanced risk modeling. I should also say that we're doing also collaborations with, using this tracer technology because it's, it's very interesting to the research community and to OSHA and, and CDC. We're doing collaborations with researchers in those government bodies along with academic bodies to map our tracers' performance versus a lot of different pathogens that would be interesting to the community.
And I just want to quickly comment that the equity and safety is an important mission for us because we believe the children should be protected regardless of, you know, what neighbor they're dealing with. And we didn't find that equity during COVID. And, and so part of our effort is that we want the government leaders to understand at the state level and federal level that, that investing into schools, as I shared, that seventy percent of transmission came through the schools and daycare, we have to protect our educational facilities in order to protect our communities. And if you really think about the financial consequences of being able to protect and reduce that transmission rate, is, is, is more than justifiable for that initial investment that has to happen. And, and we're, we're working right now with utilities and government side to see if we can generate additional funding for schools. Because we, because we understand there's always a challenge with raising money for, for school districts. So that's just part of our mission, so I just want to mention. Yeah, but, but that's, that's, that's something, you know, if you kind of compare that with how much would it cost to do an expansion of a mechanical ventilation system, we actually interviewed actual contractors to compare the numbers. It's about a hundred to two hundred times more expensive to do the mechanical ventilation expansion. So, so I think for, practically speaking, I think the only way to do this right, right now is using technologies that are proven and be able to validate on site. So, and these are important steps. And we're, we really appreciate this, this process that we're on and the journey that we're on together to, to make a difference for not just here, but for many, many school districts to be honest.
So I, I know, I was just thinking, you know, we recently had a pertussis outbreak in the Illinois Valley. And I was thinking what you said about the class, are these portable enough where if we had an outbreak of some type of an infectious disease in a certain school that we could move some of them from other school locations to help reduce transmission? If that was a concern, are they not really very portable?
I mean, it only takes one or two units per classroom. And, and the cost of these units are not very high. No, I mean.
It's not very high.
That's a great question.
Yeah, like I guess what I'm thinking is if, if we're not having them in the upper, upper grades, but we look at the potential of closing a school or something like that, maybe that's.
That's a, that's a, that's a valid question. And, and I think, I think certain, certain numbers of units could be moved, but I think it really depends on what the target pathogen is. If it's, if it's transferred in a transmission from, from aerosol, I think obviously that'll make a difference. If it's, if it's going through different routes, then, then maybe it's not, may not be as irrelevant. You know, so, yeah, so I think it's something that we can definitely be part of that discussion, you know, what, you know, what we can do to maximize the protection. And so, yeah, I think we all know about how this flew season, you know, we went through another series of schools shutting down because of, you know, the infection. A lot of schools showed like thirty percent infection rate, you know, for students and teachers. So, so it's been, it's been kind of serious and seems like, you know, what, what's been happening with, you know, climate change and everything that's going on in our world, you know, the, the, our awareness of air safety and what we need to do to prevent, you know, preventive measures is, is becoming more and more urgent. And so, so the, I'll do my best to make it as affordable and easy to implement as possible. Because I, you know, I, I want it for my kids as well, so, yeah, so.
No, the great, great presentation. I, you know, I'm going to make a comment. You know, we were, I, I don't know, it was because of what we, we did a lot of great things during COVID, but we were, we were probably in the top five in the state and being the most open school district during the COVID, during the COVID times, you know, and the draconian Oregon policies that were coming down. So, yeah, if, if this will, you know, that one, one piece of getting us over the line on that, it's greatly appreciated. But I, I do kind of second what, what Jen said, you know, I mean, to have a, to have the capacity to have maybe something that's portable where we can surge if there is, I mean, in our district, we're very disparate. We have three separate regions. So that would be, that would be something, you know, maybe we can take a look at to see where we could go with that so we can surge it out there. Because once the kids get on the buses and, and the intermixing, mixing of all the, you know, high school, middle and, and elementary schools go on, then it's going, it's going to go to all three schools that are out there. So, you know, just something to, just something to think about. All right, well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'd love to be part of that discussion and help focus support.
I, I will point out that I tested a lot of places with HEPA filters and stuff and they are very noisy.
Yeah.
They're effective, but they're very noisy. We find their adoption is not, not uniform. And, and the upper room UV GI like John's company makes, it's absolutely quiet and it doesn't disrupt anything. I mean, we saw a teacher there today, he had the lights dim and she was reading. The units are on, you couldn't do that with a HEPA filter. So it's really a useful technology.
And there's a new study just about to be published that it helps reduce the allergen in the air. So they'll help with people with allergies too. So I think, I think we're learning as we go, but we'll continue to do our best to, you know, make it more easier to implement for ten more kids, so thank you.
Thank you, John, thank you, Phil. And these guys got to travel, so if you guys want to just dip out, you guys can. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. All right, District Data Report, beginning, middle, middle of year data versus smarter balance? And that is Ms. Jessica Durant.
Perfect, well, one of the things that, that I'm really excited to share today is just a different piece of data that we look at all the time in our schools. And it's not smarter balance because there's other, there are other data tools that we use where we can shift and provide students with extra support along the way throughout the year. So let's go ahead and get you that presentation. Okay. So first, we're going to start at elementary and I've just taken two snapshots for each. So kindergarten, if you can see in the upper corner, we do something called a beginning quantity discrimination. So this assessment is given to all kindergarten in September, January and May. And it's asking them to tell us the total and to tell us the, that beginning quantity. So you can kind of see what it looks like over there. And I wanted to share with you the beginning of the year data. So at the beginning of the year, we had thirty-eight percent of the kindergarten students in our district able to perform that at the level that they should, at benchmark. And we really focus on this in kindergarten. Some students come to us in kindergarten with no preschool, having never been even in a childcare situation because there, it just doesn't exist in Southern Oregon, childcare or preschool, there's not enough slots. So we work really hard and look at all that blue and green. So the blue and green are students that are meeting or exceeding that benchmark. So you can just see visually, we've gone from, oh, let's see, thirty-eight to eighty-one percent just from September to, to January. Our kindergarten teachers work on this all the time and we're really super proud of them. That end of the year is blank and we will, we'll work on that and bring back the results at the end of the year in June. Okay, next piece is fourth grade computation. And if I gave you just two rows of what that computation assessment looks like, it is addition, subtraction, multiplication and division. It's all four. It's, it's a timed piece for three minutes and you work on it. At the beginning of the year in fourth grade across the district, we had about thirty-six percent at benchmark. And then we had a lot of students that needed support. So we've given that support. And we now are at fifty and our projection is to go higher than that because it's something that we pay attention to all the time. And so smarter balance is one piece of data, but this is another piece that we can take action on and our teachers do take action on all the time. You might be thinking, well, that's only fifty percent. That's true, we're only fifty percent of the way through the school year as well. So we pay, we work on this every single day in every fourth grade classroom. So that's, that's kind of the target and where we're headed. So pretty proud of those two for elementary. Let's move on to middle school. I have two pieces of data to share with you at that point. So this is about, we're going to switch to reading. So this is all sixth grade students in our district and they are given a one-minute timed reading for their grade level. I'm going to show you sixth grade. At the beginning of the year, there's a certain number of words that sixth grade students are supposed to read. And we had forty-eight percent reading enough. So you want them to go fast, but you also want them to be accurate. This is if they're going fast enough. And we're, we're moving up to fifty-one percent. We'd sure like it to be a lot more. And so the middle school administrators and I are meeting on Tuesday, excuse me, next Tuesday to talk about how can we increase that number? Because fifty-one percent this, at this rate is half of the students in sixth grade halfway through the year. But we want to make sure that if we've only gone from thirty-eight to fifty-one, excuse me, forty-eight to fifty-one, are we making the right gains? Are we putting our resources? Are we spending our time where it needs to be and are students getting the help they need? We also ask students, how accurate are those words? They could be reading hundreds and hundreds of words in a minute. But if only fifty percent are accurate, that's not good. So the accuracy goal is ninety-six percent. And so seventy percent of sixth grade at the beginning of the year, we're reaching that ninety-six percent and we've gotten to seventy-one. But again, we need, we're going to look at this to find out how can we increase that accuracy so that more students are reading at ninety-six percent? Let's jump to high school. I have two pieces of data for you now. We're going to focus in on 10th grade English. Remember back in my Say Something Positive? I shared with you that a team has been going to elementary schools and sitting with teams, listening to how they're analyzing data. Well, our high schools also analyze data. So this 10th grade team, there are several members on the team. They had unit one at the beginning of the year and it was called media literacy and persuasive speech. And the first time they gave this assessment on that topic. By the way, this is an assessment that the teachers wrote based on the standards. Seventy-four percent of 10th graders in our district met or exceeded. And while that might seem like, oh, that's a great number, our teacher said, no, that's twenty-five percent of our kids that didn't meet that 10th grade standard. So we're going to do some reteaching. And so a few of the teachers needed to do some reteaching across the district and they did. And then the results came out at eighty-four percent, ten percent approaching and six percent does not meet. I think the power to focus in on is the conversation that these 10th grade teachers had across the district led by Shelley Campos and Eric Lathan, those two administrators support our ELA teachers. They looked at the data, they figured out which students needed more help and support. They gave them more support and they assessed them again to say, did that help? That's something that is invaluable and it is going to help us create those lifelong learners that's successful on July first because they have those skills to be able to function, write an email, write a response on a job application, all of those different pieces, which is crucial for English. The second unit is persuasive essay and editing. And this is their first set of numbers, seventy-three percent meeting and exceeding. And they're going to meet again this Friday and probably have some more data. So this is as much data as I have so far for 10th grade English Language Arts. And the last piece of data is science explorations. Typically, I believe a freshman class. And the last piece of data is science explorations. Typically, I believe a freshman class, um, in our high schools. And so the first unit was called waves and sound. Former science teacher, I love it. And you can see that we had twenty-six percent meet and exceed. Um, this science team is actually supported by Lindsay Nemaney and Mike Herzog, who are here and, um, with us today. So those teachers said, well, that's not great. First time out of the, first time out of the gate, taking that assessment with only twenty-six percent need and exceed, we've got to reduce some, reteach. So they did, along with teaching unit, um, unit two, which is called one dimension kinematics. So they were teaching unit two and they were also reinforcing those topics from unit one that kids didn't understand. And they got to seventy-one percent meet and exceed and brought down that does not meet from thirty-four down to eleven. That doesn't mean that they stopped there. There's still students that they're helping. They'll, they're pulling in for intervention period. They're finding that time to work with these students on the topics. Cause as you know, just like with math, A leads to B, which leads to C. So if you don't understand A, it's going to be really tricky for you the rest of the class. So they really want students to do well. And finally, unit three is forces and they're still in the middle of teaching it. So I don't have data for that part. I think the big takeaway from today is being able to look at different sources of data that are actionable. It's kind of like going to the doctor for a checkup. You go to a checkup, maybe especially if you have a newborn all the time to make sure the baby's doing okay versus, and that's kind of like some of these tests. We can adjust. We can help students with concepts that they don't understand. Smarter balance is a one and done and that data is important, but you have to look at it with the right lens and frame. So I wanted to share with you data that was different than smarter balance that we can take action on the very next day. So. Pretty cool, um, data. This Friday, all middle school teachers are meeting in person at Applegate. We're going to talk about all middle school data and make an action plan that they're going to do next week to help kids that either need additional extension. Cause we also have to help kids that already know it. We don't want them to be bored. And then some also interventions if they need some extra help. So high schools talking about that. Elementary does it every single week. Man, we're talking data every week across the district. And if you're ever interested in wanting to watch a team, just let me know. I would, I would love to take you to whatever grade you'd like to see and hear the rich conversations that our teachers are having weekly about data. So. Any questions? I gave a little snapshot from all three levels.
Yes, um, really too. First of all, Pat had to step out. He wasn't feeling especially well. Then he told me to burn my pen because he might've touched it. I don't know what that means. Um, anyway, back to the medical, middle school reading, really two questions is one, uh, social media is, uh, basically for proper English, a dumpster fire. Um, so that's how students are interacting with each other now. It's half words or abbreviations sort of. Do you feel like that is a factor? And the second thing is, is, um, you know, AI is a real thing. It can, it can, it can write a paper better than I can and it can do it in a couple of minutes. Are you having issues with students getting lazy brain because they just hit the, you know, chat, chat, GPT or whatever the thing is and then produce, so I guess cheating, which would, uh, which would not allow them to learn or, or change, change the dynamics. Is that, are either one of those in play?
I'm not, in terms of the data that we looked at today, AI doesn't play a factor because it's a piece of paper that is placed in front of a student and they have to read it. It's a cold read. They don't get to practice it. It's geared at their level. AI is another different story in terms of doing assignments, which isn't what we're talking about here. So that could be a factor, but in terms of this assessment, um, probably not a factor.
But I, but I, but it seems like it just barely, after a lot of work, it barely improved. And I'm wondering why that is. Is that because they're not really reading much at home or because they're just?
That's a great question and something that Dave and I, um, with our middle school team are going to analyze with our teachers of, is it, they're not doing enough reading? Is it, they're missing basic foundational skills that we need to beef up on? Is it, they need more interventions? And I don't have the answer right yet, but that's something we're going to look into. The talking to each other piece is definitely something we have to think about. You bring up a great point of conversationally and having those conversations. This one minute test is something that kids take starting in second grade. So they're used to it. They're like, oh, give me that piece of paper. So it's something that all kids do actually starting in first grade. So I don't necessarily see that as a factor, but what's the cause of it? Yet to be determined. We got to figure it out. It needs addressed, needs to be addressed.
Any other questions? I've got one.
Sure.
Um, so and, and this doesn't necessarily go with the presentation, but it kind of does, you know, we, we see, we see low starting points and it continues to make me think of the summer slide that we're seeing. You know, as the school year ends and the next school year begins. And have we started to maybe take a look at our data on that and then, you know, try to, I, I don't know, try to analyze, we're, we're very limited as to, as to what we could do. But, you know, maybe where we can, maybe where we can put out, you know, here's some things that will keep your student engaged so that we don't go back to square one. In September as, as, you know, kids leave in June and now we're kind of recatching back up on math skills that have, have went down or especially reading, um, in that, in that case. So, you know, I'm just curious as to, you know, if, if we have enough data to be able to kind of analyze that and, and see where that's at and maybe tee that up for, um, another, another board meeting just to kind of, if, if that data exists, um, and to see that, I think it would be really relevant like in a, like in May. And then, and then talk about, you know, potential ideas of, uh, of getting the word out there, you know, that we can, so that we don't have to start, start at such a low baseline that maybe, maybe there's something that.
I can speak to the kindergarten through fifth grade math data, which is not, um, which we shared kindergarten and fourth grade. We have looked at that as an elementary team and where we used to have really big summer slides. We actually from June of twenty-four to August of twenty-four, when we started, um, we didn't have that big of a slide this year as in past years. Um, I have not looked at the reading data, only the elementary math. Um, but the slide was not very great and the focus was pretty small in terms of math during summer school. And we were only able to serve a very small portion based upon our funding. Honestly, the best thing that we do in all of our elementary schools is just have kids read, um, and go and just practice reading. We don't expect parents to teach them any skills over the summer because it's just, just if you can just get access and read, um, I'll work with our elementary specifically and how we can publish just library, open times for the public library, hopefully if they're open and other different pieces. So they have access to books and things they could do. Yeah. And data, we can look at the data. I only know the, the elementary part. I haven't looked at the middle.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's, you know, I mean, it, I think it's just something that we, you know, continue to make parents aware of that, you know, that, you know, there, there can be a slide there. And, you know, just to keep them active in the current skills that, that they, that they've gained.
We'll brainstorm some ways we can, um, communicate out with Stephen's help with social media for at least K through eight on ways that we can help keep skills alive, um, for the next year.
All right, Jen.
Um, I was just going to say, well, first of all, thank you for bringing the data. I'm always grateful when we spend time talking in these board meetings about teaching and learning. Um, and it's reason I'm here. Um, I am grateful also that you brought us data that didn't show only like dramatic improvement, but also areas where there is room to grow and room to talk. And that feels transparent to me and I appreciate it. So thank you for that. Um, I'm curious and I'm assuming that when you collect these assessments that you're able to stratify them by school to look at differences between schools and, um, both point out like high achievement and practices as well as, you know, areas. So are you using kind of stratification to help have transparent and kind of open, uh, conversations when you bring the schools together?
We do. Um, and I have several principals in the, in the audience now. I, Brian Miller is here for middle school and, and I know when we have our middle school meeting, Brian comes and the expectation is that Brian knows Fleming's data. And then we have a conversation and he shares with us Fleming's data. Mark Higgins comes and knows the Lincoln Savage data and can talk about it. And so they break it down even more by student, student by student, class by class. Because the power of talking about the data is right. You can't just look at it and admire it. You got to make a plan. And so if one school is having great success, it's, how are you having that success? What are you doing? What strategies could another school copy? What's working? That's the power of a PLC team, a professional learning team and our admin are a team too. So our elementaries do that, our middles do that, and the goal is to have our high school admins start looking at that too. Cause that's, we got to share the great ideas and what's working so they, they know their data. You're welcome.
Um, one last, there's data and there's data. But, um, one of the things data does is point out two areas, further questions. And then it leans, it leans towards an intuition about the information you're getting. Are you getting a lot of these intuitions that you think are really going to help the educators in the classroom? I mean, is this really gonna, you know, some light bulbs going off or is it just a bunch of data like, what, what are we going to do about?
Yeah. So cool, cool thing. Casey and I both sat, um, and observed the second grade teachers at Fruitdale. We watched yesterday for thirty-five minutes and observed them having a data conversation about how to do two-digit subtraction using base ten. And one teacher said, I didn't have any students that's, that scored below benchmark. And one teacher said, I have three. What did you do? And the teacher took over a piece of paper, flipped it over and said, I use this with this underline method. I use this box method. And the other teacher said, ah, I need to try that. I'm going to pull these four kids tomorrow morning. I'm going to do that with them because maybe that will work. Just that right there is the power of sharing great ideas. Um, so we just saw yesterday. It was, it was pretty cool and I loved it. So I, I think that's the power of having these conversations and providing time for teachers to do it. Now it's just becoming second nature.
I just have one other comment and I actually is, is to Cameron and, um, and just our experiences related to AI and use of like chat GPC as far as our students as they were in Three Rivers. Um, and, uh, my daughter is convinced it's actually been harder for her, um, in terms of writing essays and things because there are such rigorous checks for, uh, sourcing and plagiarism compared to like when I was in school and we could, uh, maybe utilize sources maybe a little more loosely than she's able to. Um, and then I also have seen, um, as a student, them use, uh, those tools to help like explain how to do a problem that they don't understand as they're studying, things like that. So what I have seen is the use of AI as a tool in learning and that, um, whatever rigors are in place, uh, to help prevent, you know, using AI to do your assignments, um, or at least working in the courses that, um, she was a part of. So I just wanted to share my experiences there.
I use AI every day, uh, for what I'm doing, which is super technical geeky stuff. And, um, what I found is it does, it does allow you to extend a little bit, your, your knowledge. It stretches you a little bit. If you don't reinforce it, it snaps back the next day. So it is a tool, but it does not aid in retention like you would hope. So, uh, but it is a useful tool and we're here and you can't go back. So those are the, that's how it works.
Offer always stands. If you'd like to observe a teacher team talking about data, just let me know. We'll make, it happens every week. So we'll make it happen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jessica. Uh, graduation rates, uh, Mr. Alderson.
Thank you. Uh, so tonight, you're going to go over the graduation rates, um, from the class of twenty-four. Uh, the class that you were able to shake their hands as they crossed the stage last spring. Uh, we had some amazing results from this class and, uh, some significant growth in some of the, the subgroups, uh, that are measured and in, uh, some of the schools. So if you look district wide, our CTE students, uh, so those are students that had three credits or more in a, in a CTE program of study graduated at over ninety-five percent. Uh, some other areas, looking at the support that we've added over the last couple of years, uh, for our students. Uh, so our vulnerable population, students experiencing poverty at IV, uh, graduated at ninety-four percent, uh, which is significantly higher than the state, uh, average. Um, students experiencing homelessness across our three main high schools, uh, were all over eighty percent. Uh, next slide, Rob. So for Hidden Valley High School, graduation rate eighty-nine point two-two. Uh, so that was the, the largest increase that we had across the district, um, at five percent, uh, increase from twenty-twenty-three. Uh, again, their CTE graduation rate at ninety-three percent, uh, homeless student graduation rate at sixty-seven percent. So those are students that were designated as houseless at some point throughout the school year. Uh, Illinois Valley High School, uh, had the highest rate in the, in the district at ninety-five point three percent, um, as well as the highest in our county and one of the highest in our region. Uh, you'll notice also the ninety-eight percent graduation rate for our CTE students at IV. Uh, great testament to the work that the, the staff are doing there to make the learning experience relevant. Grad rate for homeless students at IV, uh, staggering eighty-nine point four-seven percent. And so, um, huge shout out to the staff there wrapping their arms around those students and supporting them. Um, our advocates, uh, really finding the resources that those students need, um, in order to be successful. Uh, North Valley, uh, also another large increase, four percent from twenty-twenty-three, uh, ninety-four percent. Uh, CTE graduation rate ninety-seven percent. Um, and then our homeless student graduation rate there at eighty percent. And so, um, you can see some great things going on, uh, in our CTE classrooms, really getting kids engaged in the learning and, uh, kind of reinforcing some of the things that we've heard, uh, in our student panels of, of kids liking our CT classes, being able to get into them and making the learning relevant, uh, and connecting it to the, the workplace. Southern Oregon Success Academy, so Sosa graduation rate, uh, thirty-one percent, uh, completer rate of fifty-three percent. And so not too dissimilar from most alternative schools, uh, across the state. Um, again, uh, a, a lower rate, uh, than what we're looking for. Again, we're looking for a hundred percent across the district. Um, but it does give us an opportunity to, to maybe highlight some areas that we need to improve on. And some of those things came out in our student panel today, um, looking for some, some specific classes, uh, maybe in the CTE side, um, making that learning relevant. And, uh, something that, uh, we definitely, uh, have a path towards. Um, but it's something that we're going to need to work on for the students at Sosa, um, to get that graduation rate up. Uh, the completer rate, um, at most alternative schools, that really is what we're looking for. Not every kid is, is made to get through high school in four years. Um, for some students, uh, given life and challenges and, and things that it may take five years. And, uh, it may take a little bit longer than that. Um, or it may take a GED and it might be something that where they need to start their life a little bit earlier than waiting till they're, they're four years in high school. And so, um, our, our GED program is, is, uh, I, I would say one that really meets the needs of our students. Um, and, uh, it is one that is involved in that completer rate, um, not just graduates, but also GEDs included in that. Uh, so again, looking at the, at the CTE impact, um, you can see district wide graduation rate over ninety-five percent. Um, the career and technical ed, uh, is more important than just the coursework. Um, and you've probably seen a lot of that from across the state, across the state, our CTE, uh, graduates or CTE students in programs of study are graduating at a significantly higher rate, um, than, than students that are not. And so something that we're definitely going to have to take a look at as we look at what the budget looks like for next year and then figure out staffing and, and, uh, try to provide as many opportunities as possible for students to be engaged in the CTE program. Uh, gives hands-on learning, fosters real world skills and workforce readiness. Um, and, uh, huge kudos to our CTE teachers across the district. Uh, we've got ag classes. We've got our manufacturing, our welding, our woods, um, health occupations, uh, early childhood development. So a lot of different programs for students. And, uh, one of the, the challenges with having such a, uh, geographically large district, um, in three attendance areas. We'd love to have every program at every school. Uh, we're still recruiting, uh, lots of different teachers and trying to find as many teachers as we can for these programs because most of these instructors we're having to. for these programs because most of these instructors we're having to pull from industry. And uh, teaching is not uh, always paying at the same rate that, that industry is. And so um, we want them to see how rewarding it is to work with kids and uh, see over ninety-five percent of their students be graduating. Uh, so the commitment to supporting all students, so some of the things that we've uh, that we've really focused on these last couple of years. I, I would say addressing the needs of our students experiencing homelessness and poverty. Um, providing those resources through advocates, um, either in the building or in the attendance areas. The wraparound supports for students, um, our SEL focus. Our mental health coordinators really trying to help remove barriers for students so that they can access their education. Uh, pride in the students, resiliency and staff dedication. Um, again, these students spent uh, a good portion of their time going through COVID um, and had some challenges through that, through middle school and high. And uh, being able to, to still graduate at a pretty good, pretty good clip. Uh, so then the last thing, looking at conclusion and next steps, um, celebrating the successes with our staff. Um, again, those rates uh, are something that needs to be celebrated. Um, getting that many students across the line is definitely challenging. Um, but they have definitely uh, rose to the occasion. We're also, you know, continuous improvement through the PLC process, being able to identify more down to a granular level of what students need. Um, and what they need to, to meet those standards. Um, at the high school, uh, developing those processes for reviewing data uh, is gonna be key and, and something that's gonna hopefully allow students to, to not fall through the cracks. Um, so that we can get those numbers right up there, right at a hundred. And then just a final thanks to all of our staff. Dave, you know, thank the, our classified staff earlier. Um, they're really a big piece of this, building those connections with students. Um, whether it's in the cafeteria, whether it's in the classroom, in the hallways. Um, but also our, our teachers and uh, really wrapping their uh, the supports around these students to get them through four years of high school um, on time. So. And that is it.
Um, if you had to do like a bake-off, what are the top three things that are really moving the needle? In your opinion, uh, year over year, like what's working?
Uh, I would start with our, with our CTE, um, and finding programs for our students. Um, if I could have a big enough bake sale that I could find uh, three computer science teachers, uh, that would be something that we would love to add and, and offer. Uh, we are working on that. Um, and really trying to find the things that engage students. Uh, we'll start our forecasting for schedules for next year and really start looking at what students are, are looking for. Um, and then what is it that we don't have uh, that they would love to see? And so I would say that's, that's the first and foremost. Um, the second piece is I, I would again, go back to the PLC process and looking at the data and getting our teachers comfortable at the high school level of looking at um, the data in the classroom and, and what are they seeing from their own assessments and, and what areas? Um, or what holes may they, may their students have that we need to fill? And so I, I would say those two things. And then uh, I, I think the other thing that we get a lot of bang for our buck in um, is right here at Sosa. Uh, it provides an, an alternative setting for students that don't uh, that haven't found that connection in the regular brick and mortar classroom. And uh, this gives them a, a space um, that they uh, enjoy being in. They can build that relationship with their classmates as well as uh, from what we heard in, in our uh, student panel today with teachers um, in a smaller setting. And they, they feel like they can have that one-on-one conversation when they have something that's um, maybe getting in the way of their learning.
I just have a, I'm just thinking back. And Rich, you were there, um, you know, I seven or eight years ago, when we were doing our board strategic planning and we shifted our focus um, from like really creating brand-new goals every year to a more longitudinal goal. And I can't remember exactly what our target was. I think it was eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five by twenty-twenty-three.
By twenty-twenty-three. Um, and we knew that at that time, that was a pretty significant stretch. It was a kind of a reach goal um, that we weren't sure if we could make. It's like trying to remember what our graduation rates were at that time, but I think they started with a six.
Yeah, when I, about ten years ago, I think they were sitting in uh, in, in the high sixties.
Yeah.
So.
So I think, you know, the strategy or this is where the leadership team, uh, the district leadership team and the board come together in my opinion and creating the strategy to support this sort of longitudinal goal of, of achievement. And I can think of things that we've done over that time, including looking at courses. We started student panels. We have um, in, improved and expanded CTE opportunities across all of the high schools. Uh, we focused in on areas where um, maybe we weren't doing as well, like uh, like our students um, who are homeless. And I can't remember how many students in Three River School District around are homeless. It's a pretty big number. It's a surprising number.
It's between ten and eleven percent. So about four hundred to four fifty.
That's a, that's a lot. It's a lot of people.
Yeah.
Four hundred people standing in this room would be a really full room. And, and so I just kind of thinking back and reflecting on progress over time. I don't think I might have quite believed that we would be seeing graduation rates um, in the mid-to-high nineties, in particular in even like in the Illinois Valley where we're experiencing some of the biggest uh, challenges uh, in terms of the social uh, determinants of health. So I just really want to kind of step back and um, and think about where we, where we came from and, and how far we've gone.
Yes, but Illinois Valley is amazing.
It is amazing and they have, they rose to the occasion, like really uh, over time, like really did.
Thanks, Casey. That was uh, yeah, and, and I, I think, I think by us doubling down on CTE um, as much as we have and doing our best to keep those programs going, I think that's uh, it gives a, it gives a student a reason to come to school um, when they, when there might be some malaise out there. Um, so that's, 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 that's great. And so it'll be interesting to look at that with the, you know, I mean, obviously we know that the chronic absences correlate um, to those numbers. Um, you know, it'd be interesting to look at them, you know, with the, with the chronic app, and I'm sure you guys are. And that might be something maybe for the board retreat this summer, just to kind of take a look at how those two connect together and why, why they're so important. All right, uh, board policies, first reading, Mr. Valenzuela.
You have a set of policies in front of you.
Oh, hang on, Dave. We're gonna take a five-minute break after this because I drank two things of water.
All right. I'll be quick then. Uh, let's see, board policies for a first read. These are all uh, you know, slight uh, verbiage changes, some wording, some deletions, some additions and wording. No new uh, articles except for IKJ, artificial intelligence, is the um, the policy I'm recommending for the board to adopt uh, at next board meeting. So take a look at that. If you have questions, let me know. Otherwise, they're all pretty small tweaks.
Any questions for Mr. Valenzuela right now? All right. So we will take a, what do I got for time here?
Have Mr. Raycraft. Okay, go ahead Judy. All righty, we only got about 20 minutes to do this folks, just to let you know, because we've got to get back into executive session after the meeting.
Ready?
Play ball.
Okay. Judy Aaron's residence of Josephine County here in a Three Rivers School District. The good news, I've got some good news to share, is that it stopped raining and the sun's out. So that's it, that's my quota for good news. What might be bad news, maybe, I don't know with our new president in charge now, as of a month, he's, he's got some really big ideas on public school. Number one, he wants to get rid of the Department of Ed. Now, I don't know how much that's going to cost you here, how much per student with federal state, but that's his goal. And his goal is, is pretty legitimate, legitimate. He was listing all the things, I've been watching it just as he's listing all the things at all the departments and what they have in the public schools, and that's not here, that's around the country in the government schools. But tonight, it was mentioned, I think by Stephanie Ellenhart, she was mentioning the, I think you were mentioning the diversity part tonight, and between the diversity and the equity and inclusion, that's all part of this program that he is strongly, strongly running with to get rid of. So maybe something we can do instead of the diversity, there can be something else. And right now, as I was hearing all the reports, and it seems like the, the great, the stats are up on the reading or whatever, it's just like, I want to know if they're up, like what's the standard? We've got to find out what the standard is, as far as having these kids, that should be number one. You know, I heard years ago from a sheriff on, on the media one night, and he shared that he was going to build, if he says, if the kids can't read by third grade, let me repeat that, if the kids cannot read, we're not talking about 20% of them or 30%, if the kids cannot read by third grade, that sheriff said he's building more jails. And you see the correlation there, don't you? So kids get out there and they don't know what to do with their lives, and they can't, you know, get a job because they have to read some instructions on something, or they mess up or whatever, or they just are hanging downtown because they have nothing else to do, because nobody will hire them. All of you, whoever have, whoever of you have jobs or employers, you want those kids to be able to read, so that, that is a real, real important thing. Let's see, the other thing I was going to mention, I want to make sure that our kids, I'm concerned about President's Day, and the reason, I, you're Alf and everything, but we actually have George Washington's birthday coming up this Friday. I don't know if anybody's going to be mentioned in George, and our founding father, first president here, and all the wonderful things he's done, so I think we need to implement that, because they said if you don't know your history, things will repeat themselves. And history is very important, and our founding fathers, there's some on presidents that they were only there for six months and they died, so if we could just emphasize the important ones, even, even just to give you some ideas, President's Day is Monday, I'm sure you're all off, but on Friday, you could have emphasized the fantastic, the great ones that made this country great. Is my, is my time up now? Okay. Stand up.
Thanks Judy.
Can I, can I comment on that, or should I wait?
Wait.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Raycraft, you ready to go? I didn't want, I didn't want to move you too far down the batting order.
Is this on? It is. Thank you for letting me speak this evening, as I usually say, I'm here in honor of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and to be of service to the school district and the community. I do want to say that it's great to see all the organizations that you've recognized over the last few meetings, people that I know and I support, you know, fellow Christian brothers and sisters, Aaron Faust today is a friend of mine, Youth 715, the Outback Ministry, Epic Pregnancy Care Center, and the Gap Organization at the schools are great. I'd like to be in the same light as them, I hate to come and complain, so I'm not going to do that so much, but I am coming to understand the process, and how policy works, and how the school board works, and how these meetings work. I just sent a question on an email to Superintendent Valenzuela, who I just heard is going to answer, or shall he will, on that possibly, with a question about how ARs work. But I was looking back here, and it looked like the flag display has been approved with a second reading. I found it interesting, however, that Nancy Reese brought up, Board Member Reese requested to revisit the flag policy at the end of the last meeting for future agenda items, and nobody told her, I guess, that that was not so possible, if it's already been voted in. She also said on that future agenda items, that she wanted to discuss the book policy. It's removed, and we're still working on that, but that wasn't anywhere on tonight's agenda, so I don't know what it means when you suggest an agenda item and it doesn't get on the agenda. I did want to jump over to the policy IB, that was part of the consent first reading tonight, I believe. I found it interesting that it talks about student-written publications in the schools, leafless newsletters, et cetera, and they're required to obey certain guidelines, it has to be material appropriate, based on age, grade level, maturity of the audience, they're required to use, or avoid profane language, or anything that advocates or condones the commission of unlawful acts. And then further, there's another section here that talks about, there's to avoid obscenity and perverse or indecent or vulgar language, and to steer clear of anything that would incite any danger at the school. And then I reflect back to the fact that we seem to be having a little bit of difficulty in getting the school board and the district to address the library books, which same issues, which you're telling the students that they can't do these things, they can't use obscenity and vulgar language and promote those sorts of things, or they will basically be shut down until they're reviewed, so, thank you very much.
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I submitted a little complaint last meeting about this flag situation and the policy in the classrooms, and I noticed Nancy was nice enough to bring it up, and this should be on the agenda, just like Steve said, it wasn't on the agenda for this meeting. Why? She's a board member, does anybody listen to her? And about the books, she brought up, let's talk about the books, the library, it's not on the agenda. Do you have some respect for the woman? I don't know what's going on, anyway. So now I'm, I'm seeing where this flag thing passed under this consent agenda thing, where you pass a whole bunch of things, yea or nay, and I'm thinking, maybe the board members didn't read it. Because the policy for the flag is the exact same policy that we had 10 years ago. What I want, don't want to see is political stuff in the classrooms, I want to see that flag and that flag only. Now, somebody might say, hey Rick, it's just a flag. Tell that to a World War II veteran, or a Vietnam veteran, or a Desert Storm guy. Flags mean something. I do not want a gay pride flag in the classroom, that my child has to look at alongside the American flag. What does that stand for, that their flag, that strange one? Teacher, explain that lifestyle to me. I don't want them to hear that. All I'm asking is, in our classrooms, one flag and one flag alone. This is policy. Don't you make policy? Or do we have to wait for the Oregon School Board Association to send us down policy, which they do every meeting? And they said there's a few words who changed here and there. Who, wait a minute, who's governing this school district? Salem? The bureaucrats in Salem? The Oregon School Board Association? When's the last time you made policy? When is the last time this board made any policy, or altered the policy? You tell me. Tell me. Let's preserve our flag, that's all I'm asking. Let's keep the politics out of the classroom. Thank you.
Up next, David Lamell, and then, I'm having a hard time reading this, Shannon Haber. What's that? I just put them in a pile, and then I'm just picking them right off the top.
Board members, superintendent, and educators, I'm going to read this, so I don't do naughty things. Please shout out the answers, this is a quiz for you. Please shout out the answers to the following questions, if you know the answers. Number one, what two foreign countries touch the United States of America? Name two countries in South America. What is six times eight? Where is Europe? Tell me something you know about World War II. How many continents are there? I'm getting the same answers that I got from 1,000 kids that I asked in the last 30 years. Over 30 years ago, I've asked 1,000 high school and middle school kids these questions. About 45 have answered correctly, with the majority unable to answer any of the questions. It was a shock to me that three of these kids, where my grammar school second cousins in Australia could answer those questions. Out of the 26 kids in my local high school youth group, one freshman girl knew two countries in South America, Mississippi and Alabama. The others had no answers at all. Our president yesterday said that since last year, we have dropped from 37 or 38, which I said at the last meeting, place in the world, white education standing, and we're 40th this year. But we're number one in the cost per student in our schools. Why, why, and why again? School board members, don't throw a brick, you don't know why. You can't answer the question. Let's find out why, okay? Let's put a group together and find out the answer to these questions. This is my one-year anniversary speaking to this board. Now, today is time to appoint a group of citizens to answer these questions. How do we do in better educating our kids, and how do we remove the vomit, evil, woke stuff from our schools? Jeez. School board members, get some help. This school board has not done anything different in 30 years. Get some help, put a group together and answer these questions. Thank you.
All right, Shannon Haber. Am I saying that right? Am I, am I in the ballpark?
Good afternoon, my name is Shannon Haber, I reside and have a student in Three Rivers School District. I'm here today to speak out against the dangerous trend, trend of banning books in our school libraries. While some may argue that certain books should be restricted, we must remember that the purpose of education is to foster critical thinking and offer students the freedom to explore diverse ideas and perspectives. I am hearing that there is a desire for more focus on reading, writing, and arithmetic, but with rules on what can be read. However, restricting access to books contradicts the very essence of education, encouraging independent thought and curiosity. Books are not just texts, they are windows into different worlds. In some of our school district schools, students rely on outside libraries for out, access to books, because their own schools are underfunded and lack funding for resources. Banning books only further limits their opportunities for growth and understanding. It's important to remember that this issue isn't new. In the past, librarians were threatened with prosecution for offering encyclopedias, materials that provided students with valuable knowledge. While this may seem extreme, serves as a clear warning that when we allow restrictions on access to information, we stifle curiosity, creativity, and the pursuit of knowledge. At last month's meeting, we saw a board member willing to remove books from the library system without even reading them, or having a full discussion with all relevant stakeholders. The lack of transparency in this process is not only concerning, it's unacceptable. Decision like these directly impact our children's education, and they should not be made without involving the community, particularly parents who are invested in our district and contribute to our tax base. It is vital that we respect the voices of local parents and educators in these discussions. Rather than restricting access to knowledge, we must support our students by giving them the resources to think critically, explore new ideas, and prepare for the world as it truly is, complex and diverse. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll move on to Ms. Rur.
You're going to have to speed it up again, get riled up, you know, I'm riled up after that. My say something positive, though, is to say thank you to whoever in the district allowed for the assisted, allowed for and assisted in the coordination of the Fire Map Support Meeting at Illinois Valley High School tomorrow. We thank you as a community, appreciate it for that support with that, a lot of people are tripping out on that Fire Map. The books tricks and the books sold have been in the process that is currently in place for the challenge of books. This process is in need of direct or immediate revisions, in my opinion. This lady was speaking about books in general, I'm speaking about pornographic, sexually explicit, however legally you need to say it, to say inappropriate for kids in K through 12 schools to be reading or exposed to, period. First, the process itself is not parent-friendly in any manner, it's tedious, and it suggests that parents have to do, have to be the person to be all doing all the investigating with the school librarian is checking out to the kids, rather than the school officials doing it and having a policy that checks these things before even gets to students. The books tricks and the books sold, I can completely tell you guys, I've read them both several times, to see if there might be some educational value hidden in there, and there is absolutely none, other than nasty, nasty, ex-children, prostitution, incest, not, mistrust of parents, painting parents in bad lights, I can go down the whole long list, and that's on, not on top of, or that is on, you know, top of the whole nasty sexual stuff that's all coincided, you know, that's the, the main, the main subjects of these books I'm speaking of. The challenge of these books have been in the process, where are they? Nobody's responded to any of us on any of it. Other than the principal's meeting with us, Nancy took her time out to go with me to North Valley High School to meet with the principal on following the process as any parent would do, and we're still waiting. What's been happening? Secondly, you know, nobody in here is talking about how the heck these books even got into school in the first place, period! Why is it the parents have to figure it all out? The time, you know, for using the excuse that the state makes us do things is coming to an end. When it comes to books, are you suggesting that the state makes you subject children to these sexually explicit materials? Where is that specifically in writing, and/or where can that be found? Lastly, there are only two genders. It sadly, that United States President, Presidential Executive Order had to confirm them as only male and female. School executives pushing and supporting the teaching of contrary genders need to be outed. Parents need to know if our schools are still teaching something else. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Rossi.
Hello, some of you may know that I have been part of the process to try to get the pornographic books out of our library. What has astonished me in this process is how much work it is to get these pornographic, sexually explicit, sexually abusive books out of our schools. Where was the work being put in to make sure that they never got into our schools in the first place? I want you to put the policy... I want you to put the policy up for review. These books should not be in the libraries. We should not be spending our money on this. How can you ask people to reach into their pocket and pay for things like roofs when this is what you're spending our hard-earned tax dollars on? Sexually explicit books that, I'm sorry, my child, I do not want them becoming curious at school about an adult raping a child. That's not acceptable. I don't want my child being curious at school about learning about prostitution or drug use and alcohol use. That's not acceptable. That is not what schools are here to teach. There are a ton of great books out there. We're not talking about banning books. We're talking about curating a library. Libraries do not have every single book that has ever been printed. That is just insane. And all of these, most of these, all of these books that we have challenged, if I gave it to your child, you could throw me in jail for it. It is that bad. I have had to read these books. It is feels like I have been raped mentally reading these books. They are so horrific. They do not belong in schools. If you want your child to read it, buy it for your child. I don't want it at all anywhere near a school. I don't want my tax dollars paying for it. It is grooming, plain and simple. We do not want to normalize pedophilia. We don't want kids to think it's okay for adults to rape them and that's what these books have in them. It is not okay.
All right, thank you. We're moving on to action items. Southern Oregon ESD Local Service Plan.
Annually, Southern Oregon ESD is the educational service district that serves Southern Oregon and our 14 associated districts. And so annually, the board is responsible for approving the local service plan for the year. And so what the local service plan does is it provides us with an option, a menu option. So we can select services. We do a lot of special education selected services. We do a lot of technology integration services. And so we can pick and choose what we want. And so those dollars come from the ESD to us if we don't use them. The local, the local service plan is developed in conjunction with the school district. And so I'm recommending that the board approve this year's local service plan from Southern Oregon ESD.
Any questions for Mr. Valenzuela?
Motion to approve, I guess.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? I have a question. So what, what did we add? Did we, did we make any modifications to the regular service plan this year between last year's and this one? Or was there services that we needed to add?
You know, no. And they're going through a leadership change and I think they're going to have a capacity change as well. One of the things that they are poised to provide, and Casey's really involved in this, is regional CTE support. So they've always provided regional CTE support, but more Josephine County support. Because, you know, the bulk of our districts are located in Jackson County and so that's where the bulk of the attention goes. So we are trying to bolster that. Other than that, no, we're just, you know, those hard to find services are what ESD provides and they buy those services in bulk and pass the savings on to districts.
Okay, great. Any other questions for, for comments on? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 2025, 2026 Student Calendar, Mr. Alderson.
There we go. So the calendar, this is the student calendar for the 25, 26 school year. You'll notice the, the start dates are similar. End dates are similar, kind of rolled over from this year. But this is the, the student calendar. Once we have the student calendar in place, we'll be able to put together our staff calendars as well. So, but the board approves the student calendar for, for the district and looking for a vote tonight.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Classified Employee Appreciation Week, March 3rd through 7th. That is me. So I think Dave already mentioned how much we appreciate and we add to that, you know, in our district. I mean, we also care about, you know, the people that we contract out, our bus drivers, our, our food service professionals. There's a, there's a host and, you know, one of the reasons we, we also do Community Partner of the Month because there's some gaps that are, that are filled by other agencies and organizations. So this is a real thank you to everybody who, you know, really kind of keeps us afloat. And so I'll, I'll read the resolution. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, county and world, our country and world, whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system. And whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners and community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition and direct instruction to students. And whereas our community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Three Rivers School District Board of Directors proclaims March 3rd through 7th, 2025 to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Three Rivers School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of the community to join in in this observance, recognizing their dedication and hard work to these individuals. So just a huge thank you to our, our classified employees. It would be absolutely impossible to do and a lot of these employees, you know, students really, really create some of their most meaningful relationships in school with and, and they just do such a wonderful job of just, you know, taking care of so many different things. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, resolution for Classified Employee Appreciation Week.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we have a whole bunch of communication to the board. Suggested future agenda items? I wasn't here last month.
I have a comment. I'm not quite sure how this plays into agenda items, but it also is a reflection related to a comment made in, in our public, excuse me, community comments section around how we adopt policy. So as, since before my time on the board, we have always had a process of agenda items. So policy coming to us in, in the agenda around report items. So sharing which policies we're reviewing, there's a first read. And then on the second read, so we, we never approve policies unless it's like an emergency or something on a single read. It always goes to a second read to allow time for both the board and to digest the policy for community to make comments on the policy and for us to discuss those if needed. And then we vote on the policies always as part of the consent agenda at the second read. And this has been something that is not unusual. We as board members have the opportunity to make suggestions on modifications to those policies or pull them out of the consent agenda when we want to see something different in those. And that's our responsibility as board members to do that when they're on the agenda. And, and then there's a policy we're actually reviewing in first read this time. It says that, and this is subsection five of our board member standard of conduct, is that recognizing that decisions made by a quorum vote are the final decisions of the board and should be supported by all board members. So I have nothing against the idea of bringing back a policy that we have concerns over, but I do have concern over in the same meeting, bringing back that we want to review a policy that we just reviewed in that meeting because I feel like that, that sends a weird message and could put us into a spiral of, of policy review and argument within the board. So I just want to kind of highlight our process. Again, I have no concern with it. What I am concerned about is paying attention to the policies in the agendas at each meeting and making sure as board members, we're prepared for what we're voting on. And that is my comment. And I'm not quite sure how it plays into the future agenda items, but I felt like I needed to say that.
All right, future meeting dates, you can see those. We will have a work session on the 2nd of April. Mr. Valenzuela, we had a topic for that, I think. Or maybe we didn't. Okay, all right. And then a regular session on 16th, so 12th, April 2nd and the 16th. That'll be, the 16th meeting will be at Hidden Valley. And with that, we are not adjourned, but we are going to go back into executive session. So as soon as the room's cleared out, we will. You have, I have time for a quick comment.
Okay, so this is, so Judy, before you leave. Yeah, well, yes, yeah. I think you're Judy, right? I think so. You were talking about the standards and what are the reading standards? Is there a specific standard you're referring to? I mean, it seemed to me like the, the folks in the trenches are working really hard to, to improve that. And we can talk about it later, but I'm saying we're not doing nothing. I mean, indeed, and we can talk later, but, but that leader needle seems to be moving. That's my one comment and then maybe there's more specificity we can talk about later. The second thing is historically, today, in 1945 is when the Marines landed at Iwo Jima. And that's a really cool thing and I, I, I know a Marine. So, and I actually have at home a bit, a vial of sand from the top of our Suribachi on Iwo Jima. So it's, if you don't, if you don't study history much, that was a bad deal for a long time. A lot of people paid and they took the hill over. And it's a really, really crazy thing, but it's a, it's a very patriotic thing landing on Iwo Jima. So that's all I have to say.